Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Canton Township Board of Trustees' regular board meeting on March 25th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Segrist, can you please do roll call?
Absolutely. Anne Marie Graham Hudak.
Here. Good morning, good evening. It's all one long day.
Diane Slavens.
Good evening.
Kate Borninski.
Good evening.
Right. Looks like Tanya Gangula, he is absent. Summer Foster.
Good evening.
Amara Ansari.
Good evening.
And Clerk Segrist is present.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Trustee Foster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Our next item are presentations, recognitions, and formal resolutions. And the first one is a resolution declaring the month of April is Fair Housing Month in Canton Township. Will be read by Trustee Borninski.
Resolution declaring the month of April as Fair Housing Month in Canton Township, whereas the year 2025 marks the 57th anniversary of the passage of the Federal Fair Housing Act Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, and whereas this law guarantees that housing throughout the United States should be made available to all citizens without regard to race, color, religion, sex, family status, disability, or national origin, and whereas equality of opportunity for all is a fundamental policy of this nation, state, and township, and whereas barriers which diminish the rights and limit the options of any citizen will ultimately diminish the rights of all citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the Charter Township of Canton Board of Trustees designates the month of April 2025 as Fair Housing Act, or Fair Housing Month in Canton Township. We encourage the residents of our community to enjoin in this observance.
Have a support, please.
Support.
Any discussion? Motion made by Trustee Borninski, supported by Treasurer Slavens. No discussion.
Did these resolutions get numbered?
I don't think so. I don't know. That I don't know. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. No, you're right. Do you see them as numbered?
No, this makes it substantially more complicated. Please.
Just a wait a second.
Who made the motion?
Borninski. And then, supported by Treasurer Slavens.
Type everything in now.
Mm-hmm. The next one is the Social Worker Month 2025 proclamation. Whereas the people have entered the social worker profession for generations because they genuinely care about helping improve the welfare of people, families, communities in our nation, whereas this year's Social Worker Month theme, "Social Work, Compassion, plus Action," embodies the fact that social workers go through years of education and training, so they have the skills and expertise to transform their care for others into action that brings positive results, whereas the social worker profession has worked for generations to improve living conditions in our nation, with social workers successfully pushing for Social Security, a 40-hour work week, Medicare, and minimum wage, where social workers have helped this nation live up to its values by successfully advocating for equal rights for all people, no matter their race, sexual identity, gender, gender expression, culture, or religion, whereas social workers follow a code of ethics which sets as a primary mission of the social work profession, the enhancement of human well-being, and meeting the basic human needs of all people, with particular attention to the needs and empowerment of those who are vulnerable, oppressed, and living in poverty, whereas the social work profession is one of the fastest-growing professions in the United States, with more than 800,000 people expected to be employed as social workers by 2033, whereas social workers work in all parts of our society, including schools, social service agencies, veteran centers, and governments, helping people, family, and communities secure services and policies they need to thrive, whereas social workers are at the forefront of pressing issues our nation is addressing, including increased needs for mental health care, especially for children and adolescents, and substance abuse disorder treatment, and increased economic and political division, whereas social workers are one of the largest groups of mental health care providers in the United States, and are pressing for a social work interstate licensing compact that will improve mental health care and delivery in our nation, whereas social workers help protect millions of children from abuse and neglect, provide services and support which help strengthen families that are under stress, and help create new families through adoption, whereas research provides, proves the presence of social workers in schools, hospitals, and assisted living facilities, improve education and health outcomes and quality of life for students, patients, and residents, whereas social workers continue to stand ready to assist our nation in overcoming present and future challenges, including ending gun violence, improving health care and mental health care for all, and urging lawmakers to adopt immigration reforms. Now therefore, I, Anne Marie Graham Hudak, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Supervisor of the Charter Township of Canton, and on behalf of the Canton Board of Trustees, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2025 as the National Social Worker Month. We encourage our residents to join the National Association of Social Workers in Canton Township in recognizing the numerous contributions made by America's social workers.
Support.
Motion made by myself, supported by Trustee Foster. We also have a police clinician in our, that works for us, as well as a social worker, and also Emma, our resident advocate. Any other discussion on this? No? All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now we have the public hearing on sidewalks. So, the public hearing, we're going to watch a little video first, but we're going to consider holding the public hearing for the 2025 sidewalk repair program. And we're going to watch a video, and then we'll have the, as it is a hearing, we will open it up for residents to come up and speak. And actually, you know what? Let me step back. Didn't... Oh yeah, that's right. Okay. So, public hearing. So this is only for the public hearing on sidewalks. So can I have a motion to open the public hearing? And then Erica's ready to show the video. Do we have the video queued up?
Madam Supervisor, I move to open the public hearing to hear comments on the necessity of sidewalk repairs pursuant to the Township's sidewalk ordinance, sidewalk repair program policy, and as provided in Public Act 80 of the Public Acts of 1989 at 7:09 PM.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. So we're going to start with Erica, our Engineering Services Division Manager on this.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Erica Hidalgo. I'm one of the staff engineers to represent the sidewalk repair program. The sidewalk repair program began as a liability that was from a trip-and-fall incident that occurred in 1999, and they deemed the townships responsible for these trip-and-falls. And it went right to the Supreme Court. And from that point, the township and other municipalities developed an ordinance in place to address sidewalk maintenance. This is the 12th year, or the program typically, the first year took 16 years for us to go through. We're hoping that this second cycle will take 12 years. We're currently in the 10th year. Our budget determines the number of subdivisions that participate in the program. They're consolidated in areas, but we also have miscellaneous through complaints and requests that occur throughout the year. All of the sidewalk repair involves ownership through the county, the township, and the building department for any necessary permits to do the work. The concrete in the sidewalk program is in a scheduled zone. All that area is marked with red or green determining responsibility. Red is for the township, green is for the homeowner. These quantities are estimated, measured, and the letters are sent to the homeowners for the necessity of the public hearing that we're having today. From that point, it has information on there regarding the program and the contractor that was selected on your information letters. Some of the responsibilities that we look at are medians and common areas, just like we do parcels. The medians and common areas for a subdivision are the homeowners association's responsibility. Any of the, the park areas, common areas that front the main roads, all of that's marked in green for the homeowners association, just like it's marked green for the homeowners. We assess all of these sidewalks to meet the American Disability Act, to make sure that any of the slopes, hazards, or any displacements are all addressed to meet that standard. So for 2025, we have a list of the subdivisions up there. You're probably in one of those. Carriage Hills Number Four, Pickwick Village, Willow Brook Village, Willow Creek 1, 3, and 4, Willow Trail, and miscellaneous locations. This is shown on our sidewalk repair map, the scheduled zones, which is on our website for you to look at. That will show you the zone that we're in. We're in Zone 9 this year. And some of those examples, well, some of the examples are displaced sidewalk, sidewalk that's spalling, sidewalk that's cracked. Some of them have like, light cracks in them that will ultimately crumble. So these are two examples of cracked sidewalk. Ponding water is one of them. Back pitch or slope requirements for the sidewalk, the inspectors will mark those. And all, and the apron for the access or approach to your driveways, we're mainly responsible, our focus is on sidewalk repair. Homeowners are responsible for the apron or approach to their property. We can include that and add that upon request, but they're ultimately responsible for the maintenance of the sidewalk and access to their property, including that approach or So what happens after today? We have 60 days from today if a homeowner chooses or elects to hire their own independent contractor and pull the necessary permits. If you decide to hire an independent contractor, you need to pull a permit with Wayne County to do that work. That's from the sidewalk to the road. Anything from the sidewalk towards your home is considered your private property. That requires a permit from our building department. All that work should be completed before the end of May. If you choose to do nothing, our contractor, when they reach your location, whether you've tried to do something or not, our contractor will fix that, and then we'll, the township will bill you for that work afterwards. So, the program is scheduled to start at the end of May. The contractor sometimes will start with miscellaneous during the month of May if they have an early start, but that work is projected to be finished by the end of August. Yeah, right. I'd set that on there. So, the only thing I wanted to add with that is, I do have residents that call in throughout the year with complaints and requests, and I think there's a lot of homeowners that don't recognize that ultimately you're responsible for the maintenance in front of your yard to make sure nobody gets hurt or trips and falls like our, why the program was implemented. Any resident at any time can elect to piggyback onto our program through our miscellaneous. They just need to call, give me their name and address. We'll put it on our list. I don't know that we'll do it this year after the public hearing. Any complaints and requests we get, they get put onto the program next year. We put that map up there that shows the zones so that people know that you don't necessarily have to wait until we reach your area. If there's a hazard in front of your property, by all means, call us before it becomes an issue where there's a lawsuit that will take place. So, we want to help you. That's what we do the program for.
All right. Thank you. So Erica's going to stay in the room, and then people can come up, and you give your name and address and your question, and then Erica, if it's a personal issue, a personal issue with your property, she can, she'll meet you on the hallway, and she can schedule appointments to come to your property or to talk about it personally with you also. But who else? Who would like to go up for the public hearing? Anyone would like to come up and make some comments or questions?
And again, please say your name.
Hello. My name is Michelle Brewer. I live at 7048 Bunker Hill Lane, Canton, Michigan. I'm a special education teacher for physically or otherwise health impaired, so I've had my share of pushing wheelchairs through lots of sidewalks. Unfortunately, I have three important questions, the first of which has to do with the ADA compliance. I really believe in ADA. It's important. But when we make our expectations higher than what ADA requires in our neighborhoods, and then we punish our citizens with paying for those expectations that are exceeding what ADA requires, I think there's a problem. I was told by the person doing my, or our sidewalk, that 3% slope was the maximum. I went and did my research. Wayne County, my dad was a civil engineer in Wayne County, 5% is what you should have. No more than 5%. So 3% is exceeding that expectation. The same thing with American Disabilities, ADA, and I have the, I have the chapter in the spot where you can find it, the link if you need it. The requirement is 5%. So if you're getting your, you have to replace your sidewalk because of 2.5% or, you know, 3%, you guys are exceeding the expectation that is required, and we're getting charged for that. So I think that's my first question. Why is it so? Why is ours 3%? Other counties that are, or other places I've been in, I worked in Taylor Public Schools for 29 years, rolled wheelchairs on a daily basis, and walkers up and down sidewalks for field trips. During those times, they have not, they do not have the same expectations that Canton does, and I'm glad we have some expectation. But again, exceeding that expectation and making us pay for it is a real problem. My second big question is whose responsibility is it to repair it if it's been repaired by the township before? We've had our sidewalk repaired, paid four times. I mean, we've done it several times, and it's the same tree from Wayne County. It's the same sidewalk, and they repaired it, and they're saying the slope is bad again. How many times do we have to do this? Is this every 12 years now? Okay. Every 12 years, we'll put out $1,200, $1,600. $1,600. Yep. No problem. And I don't think it's fairly fair in this case. My mom's been a resident for 47 years in Canton Township. Forty-seven. Imagine this, every 12 years, that you'll have to redo this. She's on a limited income, and because we have, we have three pieces of sidewalk that are 3% or 2.5% slope, rather than the 5% that's required by the, by Wayne County and by American Disabilities, we're going to be responsible for paying the $1,600 bill. I just think we can do better.
Erica, do you want to comment on the requirements?
No. You legally can.
Oh, okay. She just answered her question.
The, just to answer your questions, the sidewalk, the maximum slope for ADA is 2% as a person would walk, as 2% as a person would walk or traverse along the sidewalk. The 5% is directed for longitudinal slope for, as people would go up like a ramp-type thing when they're addressing a segment of sidewalk. Sidewalk ramps, the area that where the sidewalks connect between the curb and what we call the key flag where the sidewalks connect, again, 2% is the maximum in either direction as a person walks. But that ramp between the curb and that key flag, the maximum requirement is 8% for a ramp. So, our inspectors look at everything and try to minimize the repair that they do. 2% is the maximum for the slope of the sidewalk. We do go up to 3%, which allows, before you feel it when you're walking on it, where you're not having a severe slope or pitched on the sidewalk. So that would be the ADA requirement that we meet.
Okay. Thanks, Erica. Then we'll speak after that. Anybody else want to go up? I'm looking online also. If anyone wants to go online, please raise your hands electronically.
I'm Diane Cantini, Michelle's mother. I've lived in that house for many years. After a divorce, I'm paying a house payment. The house payment is almost my entire social security check. I got another $1,600 here. You're getting it $100 at a time, because Wayne County should be paying for it. Five or six of the seven that I'm paying for, I paid for last time, and they were, what, guaranteed a year, thank you very much. I just don't think this is fair at all. I think Wayne County should be approached. I think Wayne County should be, have to pay, split the difference. I paid one time. Wayne County paid the next time. That would be fair. Most of the damage is also caused by weather, which is, every 10 years, the water will come up halfway up the driveway, even though I'm not in a flood zone, we'll get some bad storms. Everything will crack, and I'm left with the bill. And I want to thank you all very much. I'm not happy about it. You're getting $100 at a time, and I will eat less.
My name is Barb, and I live on Oarsley Court in Canton. This took place in 2002. The same concrete is being replaced again, caused by the trees that Wayne County had planted on the boulevard before I bought this property. We're replacing, replacing, replacing the same. Not quite sure why this is taking place. My second question is, why are some of the sidewalks 4 inches and some are 6? It's not a driveway. I have a camera. I have pictures. I have five consecutive pieces. I dug down with my trowel. I measured with my own eyes and ruler. They're all 4. Why is some 6 and some is 4? 6 could be a driveway. This is not a driveway. Why the difference? Other people's letters stay the same. Why are some are 6? Why are some 4? Who's going to explain that to us, the seniors? Those are my two questions, and hopefully we'll get some answers. And I did not pay for the concrete in 2002. I came down, I stated my case. They said, okay. The township paid. These sidewalks are Wayne County. I was told by people, and I won't mention their names, that are employed here in this building. From this piece of grass to the sidewalk, to the street, to the sidewalk belongs to Wayne County. All the people here own homes, I hope. If not, you rent, and you're going to pay it anyway. We pay on our taxes, Wayne County taxes. We all decided that we'd take a special assessment. We now pay that on our taxes to fix the roads. Look at Morton Taylor. If that's the same cat that fixed those, you ain't fixing my concrete. It's like a pothole. I'm going to get pulled over for driving like an idiot because I don't want to hit a pothole. So those are my two things. Pay, pay, and why are we paying again for the same places? And why isn't Wayne County paying for theirs? I maintain it. There's no leaves on my property. I put down salt that's concrete-friendly. I shovel all the time. Like a fool, I shovel. I have OCD. I, like a fool. But why do I have to replace, again, from 2002 to right now, the same piece? I have it on my camera if you'd like to see it.
Thank you. Thanks. Someone next on the sidewalks? We'll do other agenda items after.
Good evening. My name is Mike Walker. I am President at 6810 Bunker Hill Lane in the Carriage Hills location. Three quick questions. The first one is, unless I've been in a cave or something the last few years, I wasn't even aware of this program or getting, I've gotten any heads up that this program was coming into our area, so I didn't know if there was any communications that were sent out prior to this or whatnot in regards to this. That's the first question. Second question, what is the criteria of determining red dots versus green dots? I didn't see any criteria to determine if it's my responsibility versus Canton's responsibility. It just says if it's green, it's yours. If it's green, it's yours. If it's red, it's Canton's. I need to understand what the criteria is, and I will take up the invitation to have, to do the walkthrough of my area to understand what was that done. But the third and most important one is, you know, we have to take the temperature of the economic instability that's going on right now, these days. To be hit with a bill all of a sudden now, there has to be some type of monetary relief or payment plans or something to help with these people who can, who, this is not in anyone's budget, to then all of a sudden get a letter, you owe $1,000, you owe $1,600, you owe $2,000. That's not appropriate in this day and age. We need to understand what alternatives there are for paying for this, if we are responsible for certain portions of this, and that's why I want to make sure that we do a walkthrough to make sure that it is appropriate, that it was identified correctly, my responsibility versus others' responsibility. I live in a subdivision where the HOA is an older subdivision. The HOA, we had a meeting in this building just a couple of months ago where people were complaining about a $25 increase in the HOA fees per year. So you could just imagine those same people getting, you know, four-digit bills all of a sudden that was unplanned for, it's just not going to go well, especially right now in this economic time. So that's what I'd like to impart here tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? One online, two, one.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lucas Walsh. I have my wife Ashley and my daughter Lily here with us now. Been a resident of Canton Township on and off for 33 years, the same address. It was my father's house, and now it's mine. Just wanted to bring up issues, and we do have a few questions as well about this. The first issue, kind of like the gentleman said, we were not sent a notice prior to this happening. The spray-painted dots just kind of showed up on the sidewalk. Neighbor across the street, probably a little more know-how, a little more experience, he said, oh yeah, they're getting ready to come through and do the sidewalk. So, we didn't know anything about it until we got the correspondence letter, which was postmarked March 13th. That was kind of the first formal notice that we received. So much like the gentleman said, we weren't really aware of it. The second issue we really had was the inconsistency of the markings. I understand when there's obvious issues with the sidewalk, trip hazards, cracks, falling apart, I think it's, dare I say, common sense when it's a bad piece of sidewalk. However, my wife and I can walk through the neighborhood, and we can see areas that should have been marked that were clearly not marked, and they are worse than what we have on our property.
I would argue our sidewalk, it's like, we're being charged like $2,500. Is nothing wrong with it. It's actually crazy to look at it and think it has to be replaced. Whereas like, if you walk around the neighborhood after it rains, there are puddling in different areas of the neighborhood that are not marked, and I can look out my window and see quite a few actual bumps in different sidewalks that are also not marked on other people's property. So to see ours being marked is crazy.
We did follow up with the township too, and asked about reevaluation, and they said that we would set that up. We just got to contact you, and we never received a further correspondence until we got the letter that said, revisit the site to verify marked flags. So that was kind of our tell that, okay, they're going to do it before they want to start the work.
Which if work is starting...
Spring.
Springtime, it's already the end of March, like, at what point does someone come out and reassess the property, also giving us notice that we are there when the inspector actually does the work? Because I don't trust that the inspector is actually doing it correctly based on the rest of the neighborhood.
A third issue we had, this is before the questions we have, was, within the notice, there was no ADA-specific citations. There was no call-outs for articles or regulations or anything. That was just my deep-diving curiosity. I tried to do some digging. I found some numbers, but I wasn't sure they were applicable to our scenario, so I was just looking for the call-outs to those requirements.
I would also say the fact that this letter that we just received, like, only states safety. It doesn't even say ADA in the paperwork. It doesn't even say ADA in the paperwork, which also seems not right.
And the last kind of administrative issue was, as my wife kind of said, our quote is about $2,457. And, you know, for some people, some people might have more than us and this could amount to more than their property taxes, depending on how long they've lived here or their, you know, assessed rate or whatever. You know, you're asking people maybe to pay more than they pay for their entire property taxes for the whole year. And they have to, of course, obviously pay that every year. So it just seems like a kind of steep ask for some people. The first question I had, it says in the letter, sidewalk repair work will likely begin this spring and continue through the summer. We were just kind of hoping for, you know, better, I guess, estimate of when work would start. And that ties into my next question of, you know, how long is this going to take? We're anticipating our second child at the end of May. So does that mean that we're going to end up parking in the street for, you know, two, one week, two weeks? We're going to have to navigate around a construction zone while we're hobbling to the car. Hopefully 275 is not closed this time when we go to the hospital. So it's just start of work and duration of that work. The next question that I had was, you know, we have this quote in here for the dollars that I already stated. It says that evaluate and add any potential additional replacements needed and any additional flags marked will be built as described above. So I have a quote here, but then maybe they decide that they need to do more work. So am I going to have to pay more than I've already been quoted here in this statement? I find that kind of hard to believe as well as what if during that construction, further damages incurred to pieces that otherwise were not needing to be worked on? So if my driveway is damaged, oh, well now because of ADA 123, we need to replace this portion as well. So that's going to hurt the pocketbook even more. And I mean, you know, Ms. Hidalgo, you know, she said in the beginning, because of this lawsuit, you know, this is the township responsibility. So how much of this is the township taking responsibility for if you're asking us to pay almost $2,500 out of our pocket for our 13 apparent squares that need to be replaced?
I think the biggest issue too is finding out about the reassessment and what kind of scheduling goes on with that, which is obviously important. I did call the Canton Engineering phone number back in the fall and gave them my address and gave them my phone number. And we haven't heard anything from them, which obviously since we've already done that communication, I definitely thought we would have heard by now. And when I expressed my disappointment with the work the inspectors were doing, they wanted me to give the addresses of the houses that I noticed had problems that were not marked, which is crazy.
Shouldn't be our responsibility to point fingers at our neighbors.
So that is also a very big issue.
That's all I got. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. I'll get to online in a second.
Hello. My name is Richard Browsy. I live in Carriage Hills and I come, complain about my letters I received. I received one letter and it was for, it was for the 150. Yeah, it was for the 130, it was for the 135. They had, they had, they had marks there, but the inspector came out, we were, me and my dad, we were going, we were going to a funeral at the time and they had an inspector come out. And he said, and he, and he told us, your sidewalk's looking, looking pretty bad. So what we want you to do is just caulk it up and it should be good to go. So he didn't put no marks down or nothing. So we left, time went by, and then we got this, we got this letter in the mail and we were like, where's all these marks at? Because there was, there was no marks on this side. It was, it was on this side, which was my other neighbor's. And we were all confused, where the heck are the marks at? So we came in here and we talked, we kind of, we went, we went a little crazy and talked to people in here.
Erica was her name.
Erica was her name. And she, and she came out and she spray painted our whole other side of our sidewalk all green for my father to pay, for us to pay. And it was what? The total bill was 1,600, 1,605.
From $100 to 16,000.
My question is, why isn't the county paying for this? Because it's sidewalks and the county should be paying for that, not the, not the owner. If the, if the owner owns the sidewalks, then he should be able to do what he wants with the sidewalks and no one should be able to walk on it then, correct? That's why my dad's very upset about this. When he got this, he got this first one in the, in the mail for 135. And the other side, there was no paint. And all of a sudden, this lady, Erica, she came out and she spray painted this whole thing all green. And then we get this bill three to four days later, 1,605 in the mail. We're like, what's this now? We're going to pay all this now? She told us about it. I mean, it's, it's, it's that the county should pay for it, not my, not my father. He should, he, he, he just, in 2014, 15, he had four, he had four heart attacks and a stroke and he's still living. And I take care of him and I do the best I can and he got this in the, and he's been upset since he's got this. And I'm trying to calm him down a bit, but, so he wanted to come to this hearing and see what was, I didn't really know what was going to go on with this hearing. I mean, it looks like, or it looks, it looks like we're, we're bad people or something here, staying up and talking to you guys. But I really got nothing else to say. I just, I just think my dad shouldn't have to pay for it. I don't think any of these people should have to pay for this because it's Canton, it's, it should be the Wayne County for the, Wayne County should pay for it because it's sidewalks. I mean, the owners don't own the sidewalks, as far as I'm concerned. Owners don't own the sidewalks.
Thank you.
I do have one complaint. This last letter, it doesn't, it may say in the letter, and I, I can't say it does, but it said I owe $1,600, but it doesn't say when I have to pay, doesn't say anything. Just kind of leaves the bike saying, I owe $1,600. And Erica, I talked to Erica. I said, the man came out and said, this was all wrong with my sidewalk. I had little cracks in the sidewalk that had to be fixed. And I said to the man, when I can fix it? He said, well, it's up to you and you just fix it, make sure. I've been living in this house for 45 years. I take care of my property. I make sure it's very, very clean. One of the few owners of the neighborhood, said, don't, don't live like a pig. But like, I want to keep the house clean and I want the sidewalks fixed. I don't want anybody to, but there's a few cracks in the sidewalk. And Erica knows, she took pictures, she took pictures and sprayed. The sidewalks are not raised, nothing, nothing wrong with sidewalks. There's a few cracks and she sprayed it all over. And all of a sudden, I get this report in the mail, I got paid $1,600 for little cracks.
There's, there's, there's more sidewalk down the road that I've seen that's got way more cracks than what we got and that's not even spray painted. So why is that not spray painted? And he got spray painted for 1,600 bucks and that's not spray painted. And there's cracks all in that, than worse, not worse than my dad's. It's worse, it's worse.
Thank you.
It's just, I'm sorry. It's just not good.
So afterwards, we'll be able to talk to Erica. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Good evening. My name is Melanie Gums. I reside at 6323 Willow Creek Drive in Canton. And I am here to speak about some sidewalk flags that were assessed to the homeowners' association, Willow Homes Association. And in particular, the sidewalk flags, one on each side of the bridge over Willow Creek on Hanford, between Morton Taylor and Lily Road. There has been, since I've lived in my house since 2014, there has been a sizable heave in that sidewalk. And to look at the bridge, it certainly appears to me that that bridge has been repaired by Wayne County. And when they did the work on it, they got the bridge deck out of alignment with the sidewalk. And I have been in contact with Ms. Hidalgo about this and said, this is really a Wayne County problem. This is not something that the HOA, they, they come in, they fix the bridge, that's great. They left the sidewalk several inches out of kilter. I agree, it's a trip hazard. I just don't think it's the HOA's responsibility. Again, I, I think this needs to go back to Wayne County to say, thanks for fixing the bridge. When you dug all that out and you probably damaged the underlay, you should have fixed the sidewalk. But we're going to fix the sidewalk now. And guess what, Wayne County? You are going to have to pay for that. That is my, that is my issue. I really do not think that is the HOA's responsibility to look at it. It's very clear that when Wayne County redid that bridge, they reducked it and they didn't do anything about making sure that the sidewalk aligned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room about the sidewalk? This is sidewalk hearing. Okay, you got to go to the, Mr. Miller, you know, you go to the podium.
I didn't really come for this sidewalk, but I just happened to have this survey today on another issue. I live at lot 143.
This is, is this on sidewalks, Mr. Miller?
Yes, I'm getting to it. Trust me. The lot I bought was 117 foot, surveyed, certified by 61 and 1/2. From the edge of the sidewalk to that sidewalk to the edge, to the nearest to the house is Wayne County. I didn't buy Wayne County's property. I've been down in the register of deeds and it shows clearly it's theirs to start with. I paid for 61 and 1/2 feet by 117 and it's certified twice. Surveyed for $1,000 apiece, it's within a half inch. That, the builders, let's get to the trees. The sidewalk, trees buckle the sidewalk. I believe you have to have trees because you're required on your ordinance. And when I built the house in 1980 rather, I had to have a tree, no matter what. And it died and they still replanted it. So I, I beg to disagree with, with the township here. This is absolutely Wayne County's responsibility. The builder's put in the sidewalk or whoever's building it, then it's Wayne County from thereafter. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go. Anyone else in the room? Anyone else in the room? Okay, I'm going to go online. So Jing Chen. Wait, I'm going to allow you to talk. Okay, Jing, can you hear me? Jing Chen?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yeah, my name's Jing and I'm a Canton resident since 2020 in 6741 Oarsley Drive, Canton. I recently got, received a bill and then I always have a question. So in my previous impression, I was, always thought the sidewalk should be the responsibility of the city as a public safety. And then also because all the residents, we already pay property tax and then, you know, as the housing prices increases, that amount has been pretty significant. So my main question is if the sidewalk should be a city or the county's responsibility and the residents already paid property tax, then why do we need to double pay on this one? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, okay, let me see, I don't have anyone else online. Anyone else in the room? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Madam Supervisor, I move to close the public hearing after hearing the comments on the necessity of sidewalk repairs to the township's sidewalk ordinance, sidewalk repair program policy, and as provided in Public Act 80 of Public Acts of 1989 at 7:44.
Support.
Thank you. Motion made by Clerk Segger, supported by trustee Foster. Erica, you want to wait for a second or, just a second? Okay, does the board have any questions of Erica or any comments?
Can we vote it?
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Hearing closed.
Now, Madam Supervisor, I move, I move to adopt the attached resolution number 2025-9, requiring replacement of sidewalks in the subdivisions and miscellaneous locations as indicated on the attached list and published in the DLN or Detroit Legal News on March 10, 2025, and DE on March 13, 2025.
Have a support.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Now would be the time to ask questions.
Okay.
Sorry, can we, can we repeat that?
Repeat the motion, Michael.
Can we repeat the motion, please?
Mara, didn't hear you.
Oh, to attach, to adopt the attached resolution, requiring replacement of sidewalks in the subdivisions and miscellaneous locations as indicated on the attached list and published in the Detroit Legal News on March 10, 2025, and the DE on March 13, 2025. Essentially, the process is we open the public hearing, only the public speaks. They indicate whether they support or oppose the sidewalk SAD. Once we've closed it, we make a motion to move forward with it. If the motion gets a second, we begin discussion and debate, which involves asking questions. At the end of that, we will call the motion and we will either vote it up or we will vote it down.
Got it. Okay, Diane?
I, I just want to note to the residents that we, we do allow residents to pay over five years. They can pay on their winter tax. They can pay the, the bill over five years. So I know it is a big bill, but you can pay it over five years. So that is one way to pay the sidewalk. So that is one option.
Thank you. And we do, another couple of questions. So the sidewalk program is, has been in effect, as Erica said, since 1997, when Canton lost the landmark case at the Supreme Court. And there is a PDF online. We have a whole page on the Canton, on the sidewalk repair program. And so the Supreme Court determined that townships are responsible for maintenance of sidewalks located within public right of way. And it was implemented in 1999. And so basically, the township at that time determined that, and there's different cycles that'll even show you online which sections of the township are done when. The township did instead of, we do not have a mileage on our taxes to pay for sidewalks. That's why it's, it's done individually. Because if we had one, everybody would pay a higher amount every year for all of them. So I don't know if, does anyone want Erica to kind of speak to the questions or do you want to ask any questions, Michael?
Well, I'll just say, you know, this is one of my least favorite times of the year, which is when we cycle through a new, new subdivisions for the sidewalk repair program. My least favorite year was 2019 when it was my subdivision. And believe it or not, elected officials are not immune from getting hit by SADs and taxes. And not only did my association dues go up because we had a couple of parks at the Cherry Hill Orchards, and those got tagged green by Erica, Ms. Hidalgo, but they were also in need of repair. And so to cover that, we raised our association dues $5. And not an astronomical amount of money. And then individually, we as homeowners got, got tagged with the green markings. And as the supervisor just indicated, one, the county is not going to fix them. Should they? Maybe. Should Wayne County do a lot of things that they currently don't do? Absolutely. So more importantly, when somebody got hurt on sidewalks in Canton Township, it happened in front of somebody's home. And every single Canton resident had to pay for that, had to pay for those medical bills. And the township board at that time, of which nobody up here was on, said, we are not comfortable because some people in Canton don't have sidewalks. Some people live in private subdivisions and they're not county-owned sidewalks. We are not comfortable paying for this out of general fund. It's unfair to people who live on Deone Street that don't have sidewalks necessarily or people who don't have, you know, that is something that they indicated that they did not want all of the taxpayers covering this specific cost. And so they passed an ordinance in the late 90s that essentially says it is the responsibility of the homeowner. And, and it was the responsibility of myself in 2019. And, and it's through an SAD. And an SAD legally, you have to indicate the benefit to the individual property when you, when you do an SAD. And so what we're looking at today is, and this board is voting on the necessity of doing the special assessment district. of doing the special assessment district that will assess that, you know, that, or do that, the sidewalk repairs to the individual homes. And like I said, every 10 years, we cycle through. So in 10 years, there will be another cycle through. To my knowledge, you are not required to use the recommended contractor for the township. Every individual, now, the work has to be done. That's the first thing. That sidewalk is going to have to be done if it passes further review and it's indicated that for, for public safety, and that includes the Americans with Disabilities Act. And we're also saving you because I guarantee you, you will be a party to a lawsuit if somebody hurts themselves on that sidewalk. And if there's a document from the township that indicates we notified you of that liability, you'll be paying for somebody else's medical bills. So in all honesty, I understand how difficult this is. I really do. And there's some stories that we heard tonight. It is a big financial burden. It is a big impact and you don't necessarily see it coming. You know, and as I said, every single year, we are cycling through new neighborhoods. And so, you know, my, my heart goes out to them. I do think taking advantage of the financing through, through, if you have to, through, through, through the treasurer's office, through your property taxes, is a great way to spread the cost out over a long period of time. And additionally, if you believe you can get a better quality or a better rate from your own individual contractor, by all means, you are entitled to do that. The standards do have to be the same. I do know that people who work for the township use Rotundo because they are a good contractor. Despite, you know, and I don't know if we used them the last time around or whatnot. But, but the current contractor that we use is, is quality. 10 years ago?
10 years ago, Erica, was it Rotundo?
Okay. So, but again, everybody here today is, is entitled to finding their own contractor, having the work done, provided it's done at a certain time and it meets those standards. And then the, the total cost, while staggering, can be spread out over a number of years through your property taxes as well. So my, my heart goes out to you. But as a trustee of this township, I do believe that the ordinance protects all of us the best way it possibly can. I believe it shields the entire township. And I believe it's the most equitable way to ensure that individual sidewalks are repaired on individual property, whether they are in the county right-of-way or not.
Thank you. And as Michael said, I mean, work starts, it's hard when the weather breaks. It's a, so it's hard to say this house is estate, this house is estate, this house is estate. You need a consistent 65-degree plus and no rain. So, but of course, we will work with every individual. If you're having a baby at a certain time, we can make sure we schedule it. Erica will keep, you know, will meet with everybody who wants to go to your house. And then if you have a date you don't, that we can't do, you know, let us know. That's not an issue. We will work around your schedule. But yeah, the weather, we are weather dependent. So it is hard to say this house is estate, this house is estate. And she can also look at the work that's to be done there. Summer?
Thank you, Clerk Seeger. I agree with everything you just said. I was just wondering, Erica, there were some pretty general questions asked and I wondered if you would be able to address those. Some of those for the room, particularly supervisor just, you know, mentioned scheduling. But when your engineers come, come out, making sure that there's somebody there from the home who can be aware there when the engineers are coming out to look at the sidewalks again, how you determine which gets a red dot, which gets a green dot. And I think just kind of explaining some of the ways that you are willing to work with people and help people through this process, I think would go a long way.
So any residents that call my office with wanting reevaluations, I keep a list of those. And to make better, efficient use of the inspector's time and/or mine, if you prefer me to go out there, I have a list of those. And I try to take a group of them, call the homeowner and say, "I'm going to be out on this day, you know, in the morning or afternoon. And if it doesn't work for you," I do circle around and come back to make sure everybody that wants a reevaluation, I meet with them, have my inspectors with me or someone with me, and we look at it together with the homeowner. Homeowner doesn't always have to be present, but if you want to, we, we'll call you and we'll schedule and make sure we make a point to meet with you to go over the markings if you're unsure of that. As far as the red and green, I know you look at the green ones are the resident responsibility. And I said the red are the townships. When we pick a particular zone to inspect for sidewalk repair, it's not just to you homeowners that have inspection to repair sidewalk this year. The township has to do it every year. So your zone, the township, of anything marked in red is part of our maintenance responsibility. We look at concrete that has, that's defective around manholes, sidewalk ramps that are non-ADA compliant or have issues with them. We fix all those things and do that. And that's part of the township's responsibility as maintenance, as it is yours to maintain the sidewalk in front of your property, meeting the ordinance and the ADA standards. As far as surrounding damage or anything like that, we, we inspect, mark that, photograph it. We have enough information to look at it. If the contractor, we have a really good contractor. If they damaged something or something's damaged as a result of their activity, we don't pass it along to the homeowner. The contractor will take that cost upon themselves. So please don't feel like we're adding on things just because. If the contractor damages it, they take responsibility for it. I don't pay the contractor for that, nor will you. I don't know if that answers everything. As far as notifications, the notifications, you have them now. We mark those sidewalks. If you look on our website and anybody that's been through this program, it's an ongoing program and you can look at the zone to see when you're coming in or when we may be going back. I mentioned it took 16 years to go through the first cycle. We're only at the 10th year. So we're not going to be in your neighborhood for another 15 years maybe. So it's important that these sidewalks for liability reasons, we address them while we're there. And then the notification that you get is, it's an estimate. It's not a bill. And it prepares you so that when the bill does come in the fall or winter of this year, after the work's done, our treasurer has been kind enough, when they send those bills out, they'll establish a due date, but it allows you time almost a year to the date that the work was performed and done. So you have over a year. And if you can't pay it, then it goes on to the tax roll over a five-year payment plan. I think that's pretty generous.
And the trees also? I know the trees are.
As far as the trees, the best way I can address that with anybody is, I explain it in such a fashion that the homes that you live in right now, that land, when it was being developed for your home to be built there, they massively cleared that land of all the trees. Part of the requirement through Wayne County or in the Canton Township was to replenish and replace those trees. So part of that is to put a street tree per home, pretty much. So every home, unless you're a corner lot, you typically will have one tree. Some of them, linear footage, you might have two or three trees in front of your home, depending on your frontage. But the county doesn't take care of that. That tree was put there, it's maintenance for, for you to trim. It's maintenance for you in regards to the sidewalk, if there's any issues as a result of that tree. It's just part of maintenance of being a homeowner.
I know that some people have cut the roots. I've heard of that. Cut the roots so it doesn't go under the sidewalk. And I, I don't know if they have to work with the county for that or they can.
No, the contractor typically, when they remove the concrete, if it's due to tree roots and whatnot, the tree roots that are causing the issues with the sidewalks, they will have a root grinder and they will grind those roots at the surface so it doesn't impact the tree. There's a surface ground roots that will bring those sidewalks back flat and flush with the proper slope that they're supposed to have.
Questions or comments?
Just one. So thanks so much, Erica, for the presentation. If folks want to reach out to you from the community, what types of questions or concerns can they bring to you specifically?
They can, any questions that they have in regards to the sidewalk program, if they question why it was marked, what was marked, when we're going to be out there? I know someone mentioned scheduling and whatnot. When our contractor gets started, because of the amount of work that we do, I will have a better indication when I work that out with the contractor, where they're going to start. I gauge that on how much concrete they can pour in a day, the days of the week, where we're at, when they're going to get to your sub. And I can sort of kind of try to provide, we might be there in a month, we might be there in a couple of weeks, that type of thing. But the homeowner can call me and ask me that once we get rolling. I, I have a pretty good handle on that if they want to ask those questions.
And they can call Erica's team out to relook at their sidewalks also?
Yes.
Anyone else?
I will be out in the hallway if anybody wants to give me their address and, and whatnot. Oh, okay. The four and six inches are Wayne County standard. The sidewalk that passes through your driveway and the side, each slab adjacent to your driveway and the area between the sidewalk and the edge of the road is considered six-inch thick per the Wayne County standard. Anything outside of that is four inches. So from the sidewalk to your garage, your service walks, that's four inches thick.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. You can ask your question outside because the hearing's over. Diane?
Yeah, I just really quick wanted also mention, when you do your invoice, a lot of times. I'm sorry. A lot of times residents get confused when they get their invoice because we mail it out October, November, when we get it. And it's due the next year. So they assume it's due in, like, you'll think it's due in '25. It'll be due in '26. So when, look and make sure you see that it's due the following year. And then the other thing is if you want to put it on the tax roll, but then the next year you find you can pay the rest of it off, you can do that. So you don't have to, if you find after the second year, you can pay the rest of it off. You can. So those are ways, those are some of the ways to do it. But when you get the invoice, look at the due date of the year. Because a lot of people come in thinking it's due that year and, or this year, and it's not. So don't be alarmed.
Anyone else on the board? Okay, then Erica will be outside. But Michael, ready? Do we have another motion after this one?
This is the last one.
The last one, okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Erica will be out there and she will take your address and your circumstance and she can meet you at your houses, schedule time to meet you. Thank you. We are going to take a 15-minute break. Okay?
Oh, yes.
Okay? All right, so we will be back. Okay. All right, I thought we, okay. Never mind, we won't be taking a 15-minute break. Okay. Raise that part. Let's go back to the, the agenda. Boarding Commission reports, any board or commission reports? Summer?
We had a very interesting planning commission meeting last night where we went through a lot of the public comments that we received on the master plan. The, the planning team, Erin and Patrick, will be making some edits to the master plan based on some of the public comments that we received. We received quite a few. I think, if I'm remembering correctly, the master plan was accessed about 1,400 times, something like that.
Good.
And so that's pretty cool that people are looking at, that people looked at it. There were, you know, some comments that this looks great. There were some comments, don't change anything at all. There were some comments where people expressed concern about, you know, infrastructure and those type of things. And, you know, we had a really thoughtful conversation. And so that will be coming back before the township board, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? So on the, I just want to give a quick update. The Technology Committee is going to have an appathon. So we're looking for nonprofits that need assistance and for kids to write apps to, whether it's Chat G P T or something, to help people with a nonprofit. The Sustainability Committee is putting out, they're putting out an award for businesses to be the most sustainable. Bye, bye-bye. So if anyone is interested in that, let me know. All right, the next item is public comments on agenda items only. Agenda items only, public comment. Let me check online. Public comments on agenda items only. None in the room. If you are in line and you want to do a public comment, please raise your hand electronically. All right, seeing none. Public comment on agenda items is closed. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 11, 2025?
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the minutes from March 11, 2025.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer, I'm sorry, trustee Berninski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to pay the bills?
Madam Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills. Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by trustee Foster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider approval of a purchase order to Michigan Cat for the installation of a generator at the Village Theater and Fire Station 3. C2, consider awarding a contract and purchase order to replace the recalled fire suppression sprinkler heads at Fire Station number 1. Item C3, consider approving a request to purchase ammunition for the police. Item C4, consider the acceptance of C P E training funds from the state of Michigan with associated budget amendment. And then item C5, consider budget amendment and purchase order for Crembolino Nursery Incorporated for Tree Planting Services.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Bless you. Item G1, consider first reading of an amendment to Appendix A, zoning of the coordinate ordinances for Muslim Education Community Center of America, M E C A rezoning, M S D. Everything okay out there?
Madam Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold a first reading of planning application number 031-RZ-8298, which rezones the subject parcel at 6200 North Ridge Road from RR Rural Residential to R1 Single Family Residential as the proposal meets the standards of Section 27.06D4 of the zoning ordinance as stated in the Planning Commission's motion.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by trustee Berninski. The applicant proposes to rezone the parcel at 6200 North Ridge Road from Rural Residential to R1 Single Family Residential, which is located on the east side of North Ridge Road between Ford Road and Hanford Road. The subject parcel is 11.47 acres and includes a single-family residence on its west side. At its meeting on March 3, 2025, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning application. The Planning Commission previously held a duly noted public hearing on the rezoning application at its meeting on September 9, 2024. The applicant has applied for a special land use permit for a religious institute on the site. And religious institutes, institutions are special land uses in the current RR zoning district and proposed R1 zoning district. Director Norwood, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything to add. But community planner Patrick Sloan is also here to answer any questions you might have.
Patrick, anything to add?
Nothing to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Summer, anything from the Planning Commission?
Nothing to add. I will just note that this was something that came up previously in September and we motioned to table it. And then we re, it, it came up again in March and the Planning Commission voted in favor of the rezoning.
Yeah, thanks. Anyone on the board have any questions or comments? Mara?
Just a quick one. So this is the first reading. My understanding is that there are two readings?
Yes, that's correct.
And the span between, or the time span between each reading is how long typically?
The next board meeting?
The next board meeting? Okay. So this is like the first step after, if this is approved, there's another reading and that's when it's finalized. and that's when it's finalized that the rezoning is complete?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Perfect, thank you.
And typically second readings of zoning, I'll find their way onto the consent calendar. And so.
Great distinction, thank you. Okay, thank you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is G2. Consider approval of professional services agreement with 16 consultants for community planning services, MSD.
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize the township supervisor to execute a professional services agreement with each of the 16 consulting firms that submitted proposals in response to Canton Township's community planning services, RFP issued on January 16th, 2025.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. The planning services division recently issued an RFP for community planning services over the next five years. The RFP included a variety of potential services, which include housing studies, transportation planning, sustainability planning, urban design and forestry planning. There were 16 proposals submitted, all of which would include many strengths. While some firms are large enough to accomplish, accomplish most of the potential services listed in the RFP, some firms specialize in only a few of the services listed. Due to the large variety of services noted in the RFP that could take place over the next five years, the RFP stated that a bidding firm was not required to be capable of providing all the services to qualify. Therefore, staff recommends approving professional services agreements with all 16 firms. If agreements are approved, Canton will seek separate quotes or proposals from awarded contractors for any short and long range planning projects and studies during this five year period. Director Norwood, do you have anything to add?
Thank, thank you, Madam Supervisor. I know 16 is a large amount, but we do anticipate some plans that are going to, subplans, if you will, are going to come out of the master plan process. And as, as, as much of the board knows that we're dealing with transit issues right now. So we're kind of excited that we can bring on some of these planners to help us with the needs of Canton and for, for public transit and also potentially in the region. So, but also the community planner, Patrick Sloan is here, answer any questions.
Thank you. Patrick, want to add anything?
Nothing to add. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Did this go to the Planning Commission?
No, this did not go before the Planning Commission, but I will say the master plan is very comprehensive. I think it is probably the best master plan that we've ever done and it examines a lot of things that I think we have not thought about before in the township as Director Norwood said, transportation, but also housing, sustainability, things like that. And so 16 is a lot, but our master plan is ambitious. So I think it is important to have this kind of support.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Kate?
Yes, so as we have repeated several times, 16 is a lot. So I'm wondering, are we planning to use all 16 or is this to give us the opportunity to do so if we need to?
I think it's the latter. So as, as in the, in the summary of the item, we do plan to use also competitiveness between them because some, some, some are very good at certain, certain issues and we want to make sure that they're in the mix, but we also want to be competitive too. So if some of the larger firms want to give us a proposal on a plan for natural resource asset inventory or we get in something, you know, economic development plan or something like that. So it's good, we're going to be using them for a lot of things. So, so the latter. Trustee Berninski.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G3, consider action to pursue Tree City USA designation.
Madam Supervisor, I move to direct Planning Services Division staff to prepare the necessary materials for Canton Township to pursue Tree City USA designation in coordination with other divisions and departments and to present the materials to the township board at a future meeting.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. Tree City USA is a nationally recognized program that was created in 1976 by the Arbor Day Foundation and supported by the US Forest Service. The program recognizes and supports urban forestry. There are more than 3,500 recognized Tree City USA communities across the country, including 120 in Michigan. Canton has had an active public tree program for decades and there's been interest in pursuing Tree City USA designation in recent years. Although the Tree City USA program application is free, the application process requires staff resources. At this time, Planning Division staff recommends a motion to prepare the necessary materials for Canton Township to pursue Tree City USA designation in coordination with other divisions and departments and to present the materials to the township board at a future meeting prior to making a formal application. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. We're very excited about this. I know since I've been here, we've been talking about this. So I think we're going to carry it forward, some of the work that's happening in planning. Many of you know Zach Michel's has been leading this effort. Also Public Works has come on board too with some of the activities that you, that they're doing because there are some commitments out of the township that we're prepared to tackle. So we're looking forward to this. Thank you. And also community planner Patrick Sloan here, answer any questions also. Thank you.
Patrick, I know we had a presentation, a study session not too long ago about trees. It's pretty exciting.
Yes, it is.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I will just make a comment that the Planning Commission really enjoyed the presentation on trees.
Yes, I know the board did too.
That was great.
Kate?
I, I think this is a great idea. So thank you.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Cons, oh, it's the wrong ones. Consider approving a proposal for architectural services for the public safety headquarters building with an associated budget amendment.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the proposal for architectural services with Partners in Architecture in the amount of $26,450 with the required amendment to the 2025 police budget.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The police department is requesting approval to develop a conceptual design solution and construction budget estimate for in addition to the police department headquarters. The priority areas of need include an expansion of locker rooms and the other, and the addition of officer wellness areas such as dedicated fitness, recovery and lactation spaces to support our employees' physical and mental health and resilience. Partners in Architecture, the township's contracted vendor is proposing a fixed fee of $24,450 to complete task one conceptual design phase. A reimbursable budget of $2,000 is also recommended. Once the conceptual design and budget estimates are completed, the results will be presented to the township board for consideration in moving forward with the task two project implementation phase. Funds for this project would be expensed from the department's treasury forfeiture fund. Director Baugh, do you want to add anything?
Only thing I would like to add, this, December 18th, we, we were in this room when we discussed some of these concepts of what we need in the future. In the CIP of 2028, we, we do plan for this and put it in the plan. This will help us understand what we actually need. So one thing that's nice about the police department, we have access to forfeiture funds based on criminal forfeiture and these are some of the monies that we're seized working with the US Treasury over the last three years.
Questions or comments from the board?
Just a, a comment. I really appreciated the very explicit mention and also intention around lactation spaces. I think it's rare to think of, you know, public departments, public safety departments or township departments thinking of these things. And it's also making me wonder about how we can open up some of these types of spaces more publicly, so outside of the public safety department. So I appreciate you, Director Baugh, for leading the way on some of this and of course other departments that are looking to do this too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Kate?
Yeah, just a comment that I am very much looking forward to seeing plans for this when they're done.
Me too.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G, sub five, sorry, five. Consider renewing a one-year contract for grant writing services with Davis Kirksey Associates. And I know we have Linda on the line also.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a one-year contract for grant writing services with David Kirksey Associates Incorporated in the amount of $39,600 to be paid in monthly installments equally from the police, fire and general funds.
Support.
Okay, let me get to this. The township is requesting the board approve a one-year contract renewal for grant writing services with Davis Kirksey Associates Incorporated in the amount of 39,000 to be paid in monthly installments. I'm sorry, did, did it support right? Okay, Diane, sorry. The township of Canton would like to maintain the experienced grant writer for the immediate availability and exclusivity of the function of seeking and obtaining grant dollars for visions and projects to provide public services and improve services for Canton citizens, visitors and businesses, grant support, critical recovery initiatives, innovative research and many other programs to help Canton move forward. Just let everybody know, we have, we had sent a list of some of the grants that we've been working on, that we've been working on over the years and right now we're kind of like, as you know, in a holding pattern, some things happening at the federal level and, but Linda's been great in being able to get in through those contacts and help with that. Does any, any of the staff want to add anything? Director Baugh or? Nope. Anybody on the board? Questions? Comments? Nope. Linda, do you want to say anything?
Well, I look forward to hopefully another year of excitement and working with all the departments of town, with Canton Township. We've been really successful together and we have a lot of wonderful initiatives that been launched by our work together and I look forward to working with you another year.
Thank you. Any questions for Linda? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thanks, Linda.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. G6, consider approving the purchase of office furniture for the police department with an associated 2025 budget amendment.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of office furniture in the amount of $50,486.51 from Kentwood Office Furniture and the required amendment to the 2025 police budget.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. The police department is requesting to waive the bidding process and purchase replacement office furniture for multiple offices in the police department from Kentwood Office Furniture in the total amount of $50,486.51. A budget amendment is included with this request to use forfeiture funds for this purchase. Director Baugh, do you want to add anything?
Nothing further.
Questions or comments?
I will just make a quick comment that office furniture that's over 2020, over 22 years old, it seems like it would have a lot of wear and tear. So I'm glad that you were able to replace your furniture.
All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item, seven, consider approving the purchase of office furniture for the fire department.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of office furniture in the amount of $42,897.57 from Kentwood Office Furniture.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. Over the past nine years, furniture has been replaced within the public safety headquarters, including a major refurnishing that occurred during the building renovation in 2023. During that time, six of the 10 fire department administrative offices work areas received new furniture. This request is to furnish the remaining four offices in the fire administration area. With this purchase, the department's administration, administrative offices will be fully refurbished, replacing all the worn 22 plus year of old office furniture. All furniture purchased up to this point has been moved from Kentwood Office Furniture as they held the township vendor contract for many years. Finishing up with this last furniture purchase through Kentwood allows the department to maintain consistency and availability to the same model styles purchased in previous years, the end result being a cohesive and professional look throughout the newly renovated building. Jamie, would you like to add anything?
No comments. Happy to answer any questions.
Take the same comment from Trustee Foster. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Consider a request to approve letters of agreement between Canton Township and the Technical Professional Office Workers Association of Michigan.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the letter of agreement between the Canton Township, wait, between Canton Township and the Technical Professional Office Workers Association of Michigan.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Canton Township has had discussions with TPOM regarding the township's FOIA policy. Grievances were filed, which were not resolved at step one or step two, and the matters were scheduled to proceed to arbitration. However, TPOM and the township have come to an amicable resolution to the grievances short of arbitration. The union has agreed to withdraw their grievances per the terms of the LOA and the union and the township have agreed to split the arbitration cancellation fees in equal amounts. Deputy Supervisor, do you want to add to this?
No, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from the board? Michael?
Yeah, how much were the fees for cancellation?
They were approximately $1,700, split equally between the two parties. So it'll be about $850 for the township and for the TPOM.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Last item, consider reappointments to the Historic District Commission.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the reappointments of David Curtis, Karen Krebs and Kathy Martin to the Historic District Commission for three-year terms to end on April 30th, 2028.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. David Curtis, Karen Krebs and Kathy Martin have terms on the Historic District Commission that will expire on April 30th, 2025. Staff liaison Gloria Walker reports that all three members have provided great service to the commission of good attendance. All three members have applied for reappointment for three-year terms that would end on April 30th, 2028. Let's see, are there any questions or comments from the board? Summer?
I will just make a comment that we did not interview, these folks for reappointment, but they were recommended for reappointment and we have decided to reappoint them. Sometimes getting folks for the Historic District Commission is kind of difficult because there's some tough technical standards. And so when we have good folks who are interested in serving again, we just decided to do the reappointment.
Michael?
I just want to say, I know all of them individually and I'm grateful for the work that they've been doing on the Historic District Commission or HDC. I know that they have been working with community development on the Town Square Project. They provided integral insight into some of the preservation work at Preservation Park. So really excited that all three of them are willing to continue on, I think, the role that they play in that special part of, of, of the, of the community and is, is really important to making sure that we preserve and, and honor Canton's history.
Correct. They're very diligent in their, in their program. Kate?
Yes, agree with what Summer said. And again, yeah, this is, although it's a volunteer position, it does require some very technical knowledge. And so we are very grateful that these three individuals are agreeing to, to serve the township once again in this capacity.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, now we are at additional public comments. So anybody have additional public comments? Please come to the podium, state your name and comment. You have comments for three minutes and address them to the board. Thank you.
My name is Michael Schultz. I live on Deion Street, which is right off of Sheldon Road. Where Sheldon Road is, it's a sham. It's been a sham. Then I see we're going to get a roundabout that we got a, some sort of a grant. I don't know how much that grant is and I don't know how much the shortfall is going to be. I don't know why that corner was picked of Palmer and Sheldon, but God help us all when that happens. For the people that have got the sidewalk problem, I feel kind of bad about it. I don't have any sidewalk problems. I don't know if I should just come up and write a check and kind of make everything okay. I noticed that the township was kind enough to reassess my property for another 40 grand this year. What could be better? Property growing in value like that, I just, you know, I'm just overwhelmed. And I'm going to make a prediction about that Sheek's gas station, that when the money comes right, that gas station will be there. And you know what? Try going down Ford Road on a Friday afternoon. If you can get through that section in three, three different timed lights, it's a miracle. And as far as I'm concerned, the traffic study money is a waste. If they want it to go through, it's going to go through and to help with the people. So have a nice evening.
Have a good evening. Thank you. Anyone else in the room? I have nobody online. Okay, public comment is over. Okay, public comment is over. Administrative comments. Patrick, do you have anything for us? No? Michelle?
Yeah? Jamie? David?
Just one thing. Yard Waste Pickup starts April 7. I know we had some warm days, and now we're back to cold days, but I see people who have been out to start cleaning up the yard, so April 7. Thanks.
April 7. Thank you. Thank you. Deputy Supervisor? Summer?
I will just note, Mr. Schultz made the comment about the roundabout. There was a study session that was held, I believe, last year that may still be online with information about why we are choosing to put a roundabout in that area of the township, and so that could be helpful if he's able to find it on YouTube. The other thing that I will say is March 31st is International Transgender Day of Visibility, which was started by my friend Rachel Crandall, who leads Transgender Michigan, and the trans community is under attack right now. And I just want to make a note that if we have transgender people in our community that we love, we should let them know that we see them and we value them.
Diane?
March is Women's History Month, so. Women's History Month.
Kate?
So I am excited about Yard Waste Pickup, because that means gardening season is about to begin. Also, I believe that the Pheasant Run Golf Course is now open.
Yes, and they opened it, then they closed it, then they opened, they're going, based on the weather, yes. That's another thing that goes with the weather.
Yep.
Thanks, Amara?
Just that either on Sunday or Monday will be the end of Ramadan. It'll be the Eid holiday. I will try not to respond to any emails at that time. Can't make those promises, though. Also excited for the month of April. It is the beginning of spring, and also Happy Nouru's to anyone from the Persian community who celebrates the coming of spring. Yeah, there's, I think there's a lot of good stuff coming our way with the change of the seasons, so, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, definitely Ramadan Mubarak, Happy Holy, Happy Easter's coming up. This is a spring of all these celebrations right now. It's pretty cool. And also, we're looking at scheduling some more coffee hours on Saturday mornings for people to come talk to us. We'll, we'll put that out on the focus. I think we sent out a poll for, seeing what everybody can make up. A doodle poll. So that'll be happy people can come talk to us in coffee, some of the many, many coffee shops. Every time I turn a corner, there's a new coffee shop. Go and say, hey, try their coffee. So you'll be hearing about that soon. All right. Anything else? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
They're moved.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by everybody, it sounds like. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We're adjourned.